I call to order this city commission meeting Thursday, May 4th at 6:00 PM in Commission Chambers, the municipal and safety building in Johnson City. Tonight, we have for our invocation Minister Georgita Washington from Thankful Baptist Church. If you will stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for this awesome opportunity to pray for these proceedings this evening, maybe bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for right now. We thank you for another day's measure of grace and mercy. And Lord, right now, we just come to you asking for wisdom, knowledge, and discernment to take care of the business at hand that is before this commission this evening, Lord. Help us all and help those who are making decisions to consider all aspects, all needs, all desires, all wants, and then ultimately to rely on you to make the best decision that works for all of us in Johnson City. We thank you, we praise you, we glorify you, and we magnify you, and we recognize that all our help comes from you, all decisions, all choices, all answers come from you, and we lean wholly and totally on you and you alone. It's in Jesus' name that I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, your first order of business tonight is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled city commission meeting held on Thursday, April 20th, 2023.
Move approval.
I have a motion. I have a second. Do I have any discussion? Ms. Lous, did she call the room?
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioners, we have a number of different presentations and proclamations, excuse me. So the first one we have is a presentation, a proclamation recognizing May 5th, 2023 as Children's Mental Health Acceptance Day.
My name is Caroline Rodriguez, and I am with Tennessee Voices Statewide Family Support Network in nurturing parenting.
I'm Ashley Arnold with Tennessee Voices Survivor Connection Program.
Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is fundamental to the citizens of Johnson City, and whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas Tennessee Voices for Children, through its unique approach to serving children adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of our children, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2023 as Children's Mental Health Acceptance Day in Johnson City, Tennessee, and urge all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises, as will acquaint the people of Johnson City with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, and young adults with mental health needs and their families.
Yeah, there's multiple programs in Tennessee Voices, but we're all gathered for a common goal of making sure that children's mental health is made a big deal across our state, and we really appreciate Johnson City leadership in acknowledging that children's mental health is important as well. So, thank you.
And Mayor, the next item is a proclamation recognizing May 12th, 2023, as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day.
Hello, I'm Glenna Jones. I am the field supervisor for Tennessee Department of Human Services, Child and Adult Care Licensing for Northeast Tennessee, and this is Giada. This is my daughter, Giada Jones, who did attend childcare, as I've always been a working mother, and realize how important this is. So, thank you.
Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day, and whereas childcare provides a safe nurturing place for enrichment and development of millions of children nationwide, and is a vital force in our community, and whereas the pandemic illuminated how indispensable childcare providers are for the well-being and economic security of our state's young children, families, and communities, and whereas childcare programs, which are mostly small businesses run and staff predominantly by women, are still recovering from health and financial hardships stemming from the pandemic while they have continued to meet the needs of families, and whereas our future depends on the quality of early childhood experiences provided to young children today, support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of Johnson City, in conjunction with national observance, do hereby proclaim May 12th, 2023, as Child Care Provider Appreciation Day in Johnson City, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. Thank you.
I appreciate Johnson City Commission and Mayor Fowler today recognizing this and understanding that our early care and education providers are critical to how our city functions, how our counties, how our nation, and the health and welfare of our children is the health and welfare of our nation, and so I appreciate your recognition of this today. And if you have a child in childcare or you are affiliated in any way, please thank your childcare providers.
The next proclamation is recognizing the month of May as Historic Preservation Month.
I'm John Gadsen, on the Historic Zoning Commission.
I'm Hal Hunter, also on the Historic Zoning Commission and Secretary of the Heritage Alliance Board of Trustees.
And good evening, Benjamin Whitfield, also on the Historic Commission.
Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals helping to preserve tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, and whereas everyone has places that are important to them and in Johnson City, there are many places that fit the theme of this year's National Historic Preservation Month, People Saving Places. Now therefore, I, Todd Fowler, Mayor of Johnson City, in conjunction with the national observance, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month in Johnson City and invite all citizens, businesses, civic groups, and other organizations to honor the legacy of our heritage and the historical preservation of our city and community. Thank you all.
Thank you. I appreciate the City of Johnson City and the commission recognizing this. I'd just like to say that historic preservation over the last 10 years traditionally has been about buildings. It is much more than just buildings. It is about our communities. Looking at, if you have letters from your families and historical documents of that sort, you may not think they're invaluable, but they can be. You know, one of the things that I have are letters from my, to my great-great-grandfather from Northern Ireland written back in the 1840s. Those are valuable letters. They tell us a lot about things. I'm also working with an ad hoc committee and Adam Dixon, who is here from Langston, trying to find out more details about that neighborhood and that area of Johnson City, most of which is not really well documented, but that's the kind of thing that preservation has become, and there's a lot of us in Johnson City that like history in some way, shape, or form, just need all to be a part of it. Thank you.
Commissioner, our next order of business is a presentation by Blackburn, Childers, and Stigall on the city's audit. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tara Fenner, Audit Partner with Blackburn, Childers, and Stigall. Thank you all for having me here. I am going to talk about some summary items from the June 30, 2022 audit that we recently completed. It's no secret that was a challenging audit, but I think what I saw through this was the dedication of the Finance Department staff, the hard work that they've put in toward getting over some of the issues with the software implementation and turnover, things like that, that contributed to the delay. Several meetings were had with the city manager, assistant city managers. Those kinds of responses to the situation that we were going through shows me that there is a dedication to fiscal responsibility and importance on the financial reporting. So although there were issues, everyone pulled together, and I think the challenges are very much offset by the really strong year that you had financially, so some of these numbers that we're going to go through are very supportive of that. Almost all of the funds had an increase in their fund balance for the year, so collectively there was an increase of net position for the city as a whole of over 58 million. That's huge. So your net position at the end of the year was 442 million, and a large portion of that is invested in capital assets, so I think that goes a long way towards showing the importance that the city places on infrastructure, buildings, making sure that our city can run and maintain the roads, the classrooms, there was just so much going on project-wise. So really strong year for that. Some of the specific capital asset items, lots of infrastructure improvements, the Carver Splash Pad, classroom renovations and additions, Wing Deer Park athletic fields, renovation on the Ash Street Courthouse, Freedom Hall skylights, and water and sewer line extensions. Those are just a few of the larger projects that you all did during the year. Additional purchases of buildings, solid waste vehicles, buses, all the things that you need to really keep those services running for the city. In addition to the fixed assets, we also focus a lot on debt. The city did issue new bonds during the year of 84 million. A large portion of that was unspent at the end of the year because it was being held to fund the furtherance of those projects, so the ones that weren't completed as of the end of the year. Those funds are held to pay for those. The city did also contribute payments toward their debt of over 16 million, so you all paid down a significant portion of your debt, and you're still well below the lending limit for the city. Grant items, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, you were at over 27 million in federal grant dollars that you spent during the year. That's huge, and that's a big increase from what we had seen in previous years. Some of that was still COVID money that had carried over and some of the additional programs that you had going on. We did end up with nine programs that we tested as major. That's not unusual, given the increase that you had in some of those larger grant items. Most of those go toward education, food service, police and public service, community development, transit, all of the transportation projects, and the wastewater upgrade project. State expenditures, you were at 4.1 million, and those are primarily for transit, education, boarding of prisoners, community development, lots of different things going on that you received state funding for. So I am happy to say that out of all the grant stuff that we looked at, we had no findings related to any of the grant activity. There were some issues that we had noted in the report, material weaknesses related to food service inventory, bank reconciliation, and then just the delays in the financial reporting, and there was a significant deficiency related to cash dispersments. A lot of those things were tied to the software conversion, so it's not surprising to me that there were issues in the year when you undertake a project that large for a government of this size. But I will say the management responses to that and the plan for that are very reasonable, and we agree with what is being done to remedy those issues. Really, I think, all in all, even though with the delay and all of that, you all finished strong, pulled together, showed that this is important, and you're going to invest the time to your financial reporting, so. Are there any questions or anything specific?
Anything from the commission?
Just maybe expand a little bit. When you talk about the improvement or the addition in net position, lest anyone hear you say that $50 million number, that's not cash waiting to be spent, that's the money that's been deployed at those fixed assets that you listed.
Right, so you all have the fund level reporting, which is what your budgets and such are set on, that's what you do your monthly check-ins with. At the government-wide level, we have to take things like fixed assets, debt, all of those long-term assets and long-term liabilities that aren't reported in your governmental funds, and add those in, so that's where that big number comes from. I think the general fund had about 7.5 million, just of an increase in that fund alone. So you all had a really strong year, lots of increases in your sales tax revenue, which is good. I mean, that shows people are out spending money, and that comes back, and you all get to put that back into the city.
Anything else?
I would just really like to compliment our city manager coming into a time where we were doing this major software conversion, and that was not easy. I don't think anybody sitting in the audience or watching, if your companies have gone through this, don't realize what a challenge it is. And then to our Finance Department, and Ms. Lous, for you've stepped right into the middle of it as well, and just really got your arms around it, and were able to get everything pulled together. So I just want to thank your group and to all the staff there who pulled double time, triple time, and probably quadruple time in getting all this done, and thank Blackburn, Childers, and Stigall for also being our partner in helping get this completed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you a lot, and you know, at the end of the day, we had four findings that already have been, you know, mitigation plans in place to correct those, and so we'll look forward to next year.
If I could add, it's important to remember that we're auditing a fiscal year that ends in the middle of a calendar year, and so this is the fiscal year that ended June 30 of 2022, and so just maybe to revisit some history, in addition to that fiscal year being a period in which we made a major software conversion, we also saw a city manager retire midway through that year, a new city manager come in midway through that year, and then right at the beginning of the party called the audit, our finance director retired, and so in the midst of that, we're backfilling a position that's critical to the performance of the audit. And through that whole time, as a commissioner, I would want the public to know, we were being made regularly aware of the challenges that were occurring in just generating the reports and the pulling the data. There was never really a question about the quality of the data, it was really more a question of being able to pull the numbers and get them to come out in a format that was usable, and so, you know, I think I can speak for the commission in saying, we appreciate the candor with which you shared with us, the incremental progress and challenges we were encountering, and I look forward to the fact with a software conversion like this, eventually there is a light at the tunnel. A good day comes, and the efficiencies are achieved, and you know, we've turned the corner, but it has been an effort that did not go unnoticed.
And I think too, it's important to realize that the city doesn't normally have these kinds of findings, so it's fully contributed to all the challenges with that year. This isn't the norm for you all, so I fully expect we'll see back with reduced and fewer findings, definitely, if not completely rectified within next year, possibly one more year while we're still working out the kinks. But we did still issue a clean opinion because there was never a question on whether the work was getting done, as you said. I think it was taken very personally by the Finance Department because this is not what they typically have had to deal with, and not what they're used to, not being able to provide a report, or provide a report that maybe they weren't 100% sure about, and that's strictly related to the software conversion. So I think plans have been put in place, and you all are definitely on track for.
Commissioner, I would add one other thing. When you use the word candor, and I appreciate that, I see Representative Hicks is in the audience tonight, but you know, this commission with our city manager and assistant city manager scheduled a meeting with our comptroller, and we went down to his office and sat and talked through this before we got the audit completely turned in, so had a clear understanding in Nashville, you know, what we're going through and the plans we had in place to be able to get it turned in by April 30th, and it was turned in before April 30th.
April 28th.
Thank you.
That's a win.
So commissioners, we would need a motion to accept the audit?
Move that we accept the audit.
Second. Motion and a second. Other than just saying, the comptroller speaks a lot to us at different places and things, and one of his favorite comments is better to call the comptroller before the comptroller calls you, so we did that, and so we appreciate everybody doing that, so. Anything else before we go? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Before we move to the consent agenda, I would also like to really, I think you all mentioned it, but I can't say enough about the partnership with BCS and the way they worked with us, but also with the staff. I want to personally thank Randy Trivet for the work that he did in pulling this together, our assistant city manager, and then Ms. Lous, and the finance team, you mentioned it, Commissioner Brock, were just phenomenal. The hours that they put in, the work that they did operating under a new system was phenomenal, and I would be remiss if I really didn't point out the dedication they have to the city in making that happen.
Because just so people keep, these folks had full-time jobs that kept them busy 45 or 48 hours a week, and then we throw into it, oh, by the way, there's this special project. And if there's a lesson to be learned in how this played out, I think it is check your irrational optimism, because I think when we went through a software conversion without additional supports, we were assuming that everybody could just do double duty and be doing the software conversion while doing their day-to-day tasks, and I think we just put it under a great deal of pressure.
Thank you all. Next item on your agenda is consideration of the consent agenda.
I'll start over here tonight.
I don't, it's fairly short, I have nothing to pull.
All right, Vice Mayor.
I'll pull 5.1.1.
And I have nothing to pull, so we'll go to 5.1.
And Commissioner, we have Steve Willis, and we're very excited, I think this may be his first commission meeting back as assistant city manager. Steve was with us before for seven or eight years as Human Resources Director, and we are thrilled to have him back after 18-month sabbatical, to be able to come back to us in the role of assistant city manager, so he'll be happy to answer any question you have.
I pulled it just to get you up here, Steve.
Thank you.
Just a real quick overview of, you know, what this means, and you know, the fact that we've gone back into the retirement system with the state.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ball, for your kind comments, as well as the very welcoming environment that I've come back into. It's a great pleasure to be here before you this evening. So as you're well aware, the commission approved reentry into the TCRS system back in December. So that was kind of step one to pass that resolution. What you have before you here tonight is a resolution to approve the 457B plan and the 401K plan, which is a portion of the hybrid program now. Essentially, you have a defined benefit, or what we would normally characterize as a pension plan, as part of the equation. These two resolutions, before you tonight, approve the second half of that hybrid program. And this has been six years coming. I think I made a presentation to the commission in December of 2017.
I think you did.
To reentry, so.
We don't like to make rash decisions.
You don't, and I can appreciate that, but I'm very happy to bring this before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Move approval on the consent agenda.
I'll have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about the consent agenda? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
The next order of business is consideration of ordinances under the second reading, item 6.1, which is ordinance 4836-23. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend Title V, Chapter 1 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. There is nothing that has changed since first reading. What is before you again is the consideration for authority to authorize the city manager to enter into binding contracts that have binding terms and conditions up to the amount of $25,000.
I think we have public hearing tonight.
Yes, we do.
Oh, I see that now, yeah.
Oh, excuse me, yes, sorry.
We're moving approval on the public hearing.
It wasn't in.
Okay, I'll let you approve that, I'm about to do that. So I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak about this topic, just come up to the microphone. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing and?
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Item 6.2 is ordinance number 4842-23. This is the second reading. It's an ordinance authorizing the City of Johnson City to enter into a certain right-of-way access agreements with LMK Communications LLC. And we have Andy Best, our interim Public Works Director.
Yes, nothing has changed since the first reading in regards to this agreement. It just allows LMK to use the right-of-way for installation of a telecommunications system. And I believe Commissioner Brock had a question about what would be seen. All of the equipment will be inside customers' buildings, and everything will be in pull boxes or underground.
So no big things on posts or anything?
Correct, that's what was communicated, and LMK also said they would be happy to provide a representative next time if you'd like to ask them any additional questions.
Is there a chance, though, that once you've granted the right of entry, that what they intend to do now and what they eventually do later is more permissive? You know, I mean, they may have intent of not doing those things, but does the right of entry create a scenario where five years from now they can choose to?
I believe our contract, and I may have to defer to Sunny, but it gives us a lot of authority over exactly what they put in and how they put it in, and approval from our side, but.
Correct. The ordinance that approves the allowance for them to be able to enter into those areas is different than the franchise agreement that we'll be entering, which we will be able to set those parameters more specifically.
In the franchise agreement?
Yes, sir.
I also read in the material, they will need pole attachments as well, which I'm assuming they're working with Bright Ridge on that.
Yes.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Fowler.
Yes.
Commissioner, the next order of business is ordinance 4843-23. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend Title VIII, Chapter 1 of the Code of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee.
I'll turn it over to Sunny Santos.
Thank you. There is nothing that has changed with this ordinance from the first reading. One point of emphasis that wasn't made clear in the last reading is that any allowance for the temporary use of alcohol outside of the premises of the building of Freedom Hall is still going to comply with all requirements that have been set forth in Title VIII with regard to distances, as well as any other time parameters or requirements, so all existing requirements will remain in place.
Like when students are present, those kind of things.
That is correct, and distance front. That is correct, and distance from playgrounds or churches or schools. Yes, sir.
All right. And this is public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward to the podium. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Or further discussion?
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
I do have one other question. I'm sorry. I was reviewing Dr. Barnett's letter to us, and did we get back to him to assure that his concerns are addressed in this ordinance?
That events where alcohol will be served will not be scheduled at the same time.
Correct. I mean, it's embedded in the ordinance for sure, but I think it would probably be a good idea if we respond to him as also.
Yes.
I believe he's here. He was in the building.
Oh, he just left.
Well, he didn't care to hear that.
Well, I just want to make sure that we respond specifically to him.
And I anticipate that those will be additional conversations that take place with our special events coordinator, as well as our director for Freedom Hall. But there's still going to be, like I said, those requirements are still going to be in place with regard to any student activities that are taking place, just as they do with any events that we hold in our parks as well.
Thank you. Do you want to ask your question again?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner, the next order of business is ordinances under third reading. The first one is 7.1, ordinance 4837-23. This is the third reading. It's an ordinance to abandon an existing sanitary sewer easement located on property owned by the City of Johnson City at tax parcel 054A-B012 and 054A-B12.02 and Brummet Development LLC at parcel 054A-B-011.05. And I think we have, we have Tom Witherspoon here.
Be happy to answer any questions.
Any changes since the last reading?
Move approval.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner, the next order of business is ordinance 4839-23. This is the third reading. It's an ordinance to establish Article 17, open space in the City of Johnson City zoning code, and to amend Article 2 and 6, definition of terms used in the code and use requirements by district in order to establish an open space requirement and standard.
There have been no changes since last time.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion again in two seconds. Any further discussion? Ms. Lous?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Item 7.3 is ordinance number 4841-23. This is third reading and public hearing. It's an ordinance assigning the R2B zoning district to an approximately 115-acre territory located north of Ford Creek, and RP3 district to an approximately 20-acre territory south of Ford Creek, associated with the voluntary Keebler annexation. Ms. Boran is here to talk about this one as well.
Get to see the bouncing.
Awesome. So I'm going to actually go a little bit backwards on the agenda, and I'm going to start with my presentation for the final resolution, which is actually under other tonight. But because the public hearing for the item is right now, and I assume that the public is going to be here to speak. So I'm going to go ahead and give this presentation first, and then I'm going to give my zoning assignment presentation, and then you all can open the public hearing. All right. So we are now past the December 15th, when this item was first heard, and we are now to May 4th, where we have caught up. But this is the final resolution and third reading of the zoning ordinance. So in front of you is a request for an approximately 135-acre territory located along Suncrest Drive. This annexation does correspond with the plan of services that is in your packet. The applicant is seeking a zoning assignment of R2B and the planned residential district, which is RP3. So the request is in front of you. I'm going to spend probably a lot longer talking about the actual request itself when I talk about the zoning assignment portion. Again, this is just the presentation for the actual annexation itself. But just to give you an idea of what the plan is, it's a 362-lot subdivision. So the plan of services that was included in your packet has these different agencies on here. And all agencies did review the proposed plan of services. And I know I've given this presentation, I think, a couple times now. But because it's been a little while, I'm going to kind of go through again just to refresh everybody's memory. So looking at this big development, this is one of the largest developments that Johnson City has ever seen. So going through the plan of services, we have some services that are good to go. We have some services that we wanted to stop and kind of analyze a little bit harder. And then we have a couple services that we were like, whoa, okay, we really need to look at this. And so as we go through this, pretty much what happens behind the scenes of an annexation is a bunch of different departments and agencies get together to review these plans, to make sure that, one, we have the ability to serve them, and, two, we figure out how exactly that service is going to work. And that all gets combined into that legally binding plan of services document that's in your packet. So first, we're going to talk about the green services. So those are the services that are good to go. As far as police and fire goes, police is going to have some new personnel, but they will be able to serve this territory. As far as fire goes, they will be able to serve this territory with the existing resources that they have over at Station 8. So about the yellow services, schools. So as you can see from my graph right here, this is going to add a projected 164 students to the school system. Now, that's not 164 students in like one grade. That would be 164 students spread across K through 12. So the students would attend Woodland Elementary, Liberty Bell, and Science Hill High School. But depending on different plans and different improvements that are made to capacities around the school system, there is a chance that these students get switched around and the schools don't change. This would also require a new school bus and driver. And the plan of services does outline up to five years for this to happen, so that funding can be secured for this and a position can be created. Mass transit is not serving this area currently. I have a map of our mass transit system. As you can see, it serves many, many areas of our city, and it's very widespread. It just hasn't quite made it out to the gray area yet.
Do we, as city manager, do we have long-range plan for our mass transit service that would eventually get to this area?
I wouldn't need to get back with you on that. I'm not, I know that there's a planning horizon, but I'm not aware of what that plan is.
Okay.
And then our red services. So the services that we really had to stop and really take some time to analyze. Really, that's going to be sewer. Right now, sewer can currently handle up to 200 homes, which means that this development has to be phased. It has to be phased in a five-year timeframe, and that is actually written into the plan of services, which again is that legally binding document. So we were able to sit and say, okay, we absolutely cannot handle this development at all right now. However, we do have sewer improvements that are going to be made in the future. And essentially, what this project does, if you guys choose to annex, and we'll kind of bump those up in the timeframe, so kind of speed up some of those improvements that were slated to be made, you know, in the future anyway. So move that up and then phase out this development so that it cannot occur all at once. So it allows those sewer improvements to be made, so that it's able to serve that area. As far as water goes, there are minimum water improvements that were needed to be made. Then I also want to talk a lot about roads. And I'm going to do my best. I am by no means a traffic engineer, but I'm kind of going to give you the broad overview of roads. And we do have our traffic engineer here to answer any questions that you guys might have that are a little bit more in-depth. So as far as a traffic study goes, a traffic study is going to be required with this development. However, it's not required just yet. This is the annexation of the territory. So this is just saying, hey, can we come into the city limits? You also can't do a traffic study based on the detail level of the concept plan that they've provided. You need much more detailed information to be able to perform that traffic study. And so that information comes along with a preliminary plat. And so at that point in time, that's when the traffic study will be completed, and the area will be studied. And so using city and TDOT standards, the traffic study will be completed, and then potential problems will be identified, and solutions will be determined to mitigate those problems. As far as funding goes, very, at a very high level, once an improvement is identified, it's either warranted by the development or just general growth in the area. So depending if the development is specifically warranting the improvement, the developer is typically responsible for the improvement. If it's just general growth, that typically comes from city or federal funds. Just some anticipated improvements. Again, the traffic study hasn't been completed, but just from the public works department, some improvements that they see potentially being required out there would be signaling the intersections, widening the roads to accommodate turn lanes, and a deceleration lane. If this property is not annexed, development must occur in the county. They can either develop by right. That could get them up to 270 units that would all be on septic. Or they could potentially seek a rezoning. To get that higher density, they would require city sanitary sewer. So currently, right now, it's zoned agricultural in the county. So if they decided that they didn't want to make this homes, it could be any of those current by-right uses. And that would not require any sort of public process. That is just what the land has by right. And again, you see, without sewer availability, you're limited to that half-acre lot size. A couple county districts. If this area did not get annexed and they wanted to rezone out in the county, these are some potential rezoning options that they would have. I'm not going to go too far in depth. I'm not the expert on Washington County zoning code. But essentially, they would have development options. Here's a vicinity map. Staff recommends approval of the final resolution and plan of services. And I'm done with this PowerPoint. But like I said, I'm doing things a little backwards so that I was able to do that before the public hearing. So now I'm going to talk about the zoning assignment. All right. So this is the item that we're actually on tonight. And it is the third reading and public hearing of the zoning assignment. So again, our little star is bouncing, and we caught up to May 4th, where we have both this and that final resolution. All right. So now I can talk a little bit more about the actual zoning request. You see that this much larger portion is proposed to go to R2B, which is a low-density, single-family residential district. And this front portion is proposed to go RP3. This is a multifamily-allowed zone. It's closer to the road and closer to that infrastructure. So it's, staff believes that it's feasible and okay for the townhomes to go up on that side and to have multifamily along the roads. And there are no binding concept plans with this initial zoning assignment. The future land use map, as I was talking about, the higher-intensity townhomes being towards the road. The future land use map kind of supports that. I know it says commercial, but the idea is that your higher-intensity uses are closer to the road. So once they are in the city, they do have plans to rezone from R2B to an RP district. What happens when you trigger that rezoning is you get a required concept plan that is binding. So you see the image that you have in front is the image that the developer has provided and intends to submit for the rezoning that would potentially be their binding concept plan. So there's that 362 single-family lots, 126 townhomes. They would be able to build the townhomes if this is approved, as presented tonight, by right. So they could start that because it's in the RP district. They don't have to seek a rezoning for that front townhome portion. But this back, single-family portion, in order to do this, they would have to come before you all and create a rezoning application and have that binding concept plan. So if they do seek a rezoning, which again, they said that they are planning to, that would be the timeline in front of you. So just saying, you will be seeing this again if this property is annexed. And again, when you see this and you have that, that binding concept plan, you'll be able to kind of go a little bit deeper into the details of the concept plan. Whereas maybe tonight, we're just focusing on more of a land use situation. So again, staff is recommending approval of the zoning assignment of R2B and RP3 because that residential is appropriate with the higher density along the edge and that single-family kind of towards the back. And the planning commission also recommended approval by a vote of 7-0. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have, or get the correct staff that can answer the questions.
Is there a difference in the lot sizes between what the current zoning would allow them versus what they would bring forward next month?
So they almost meet the requirements of the R2B, but they're a little bit shy. I think that we've used the term R2C and a half, because they're getting super close to the R2B, but they're having a really hard time making it work. And so that's why they're coming in with a concept plan for the RP. The RP allows a lot more flexibility in the district. But once you have that binding concept plan, you can say, okay, this is the size lot that we're comfortable with.
I know you had also presented some information about lot averaging. Would that apply to this neighborhood, or the builder could choose to do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Which gives them a lot, a lot more diversity in the way the neighborhood looks.
Yes, ma'am. And we have asked them, and you can kind of see in the plan, they're actually incorporating that right now. And so you can see that they have some smaller lots and some larger lots already worked into their plan right now. So that's something that they, they're planning on incorporating.
And that would drive a different look of the houses, single-story in some places and two stories in others?
Correct. I mean, they could put, you know, whatever house on the lot fits on the building pad. But in theory, yes, you would put a smaller lot on a, a smaller house on a smaller lot.
Mr. Mayor?
Anything else?
I have, I guess, a procedural question for you or the city manager. So the next two items, this item and the next item, are about the same topic. They both have public hearings. This, the first item is about the application of the zoning assignment. You're going to open the floor to public hearing or public comment, but what we're really talking about is should it be this, you know, zoning assignment, or should it be some other zoning assignment? And then we're going to move on to the next thing, assuming this passes, and be talking about the annexation, again, have public hearing. And I guess what I'm wondering, for the benefit of those who may have come to speak, how do we give some definition or focus to when does it make sense and in what way? I mean, I understand procedurally, we need to open two public hearings, but it might be helpful for people to know, not to get, not to get up both times, or to, you know, how to make their comments most pointed and direct.
I will note that you guys closed the public hearing for the final resolution back when you deferred it, which you can reopen it again. But it doesn't have to be reopened.
On the annexation?
On the, on the final resolution, yes, on the annexation.
Right. So that's not this one we're on right now?
Correct, correct. Which, in case you guys didn't reopen it and just chose to use this opportunity to speak essentially on both items, which is why I gave that second presentation first.
I guess that's what I'm, if there's an opportunity to just have the public hearing in one item, I mean, I think right now, I thought it, oh, I'm sorry. Well, they both list public hearing on the agenda.
But we don't have to reopen the public hearing on the other, on the 8.1. We can do it all right now.
Do you concur with that, Ms. Ball?
And I don't know if Ms. Santos, I think, I would agree with that. I think that in trying to define, this is about the size of the lots, the zoning that's being proposed. The other one is about the property actually being annexed. I think most folks know that. I think we're just trying to clarify. And I see Ms. Santos coming up, and I think she may be able to help us with the Roberts Rules of Order around this.
From my point of clarification, can you restate the question that you have?
So we have on our agenda two separate items of business, both of which currently list public hearing. We've got a room full of people that probably want to say something. And do they need to get up two different times and say it twice? Is there a better way for us to give definition around, you've come, you want to make comments? They're probably about the zoning assignment, but they're also probably about the annexation request. How do we help create a little bit more certainty about when to speak and give it some order?
So you can satisfy public hearing at one time with the people coming up to speak with regard to... With regard to how closely you're going to monitor which point they are speaking to, that will be up to your deference, but you will be able to satisfy the requirement.
So we can have one public hearing for both?
Yes, or you're satisfying the intent of the law by allowing the public the opportunity to speak on the items that are within the agenda.
I think that probably answers my question.
That's why I was saying, I can open it for this, and we can have everybody speak, and I do not have to open for the second one if we let everybody talk about this whole subject at one time.
As long as there is an ample opportunity for everybody to speak as to the matters that are listed on the agenda.
Gotcha. And they can address really either topic, annexation or the zoning assignment?
Correct. Again, limiting to their point of topic is going to be at, at your deference if, but you will be able to satisfy the intent of the law and the requirements by allowing that opportunity to speak at once.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else before I do open the public hearing? All right, before I open the public hearing, I'm going to open this, and anyone who wishes to speak is more than welcome to come up and speak. We will let you have three minutes each. If you're going to say the exact same thing the person in front of you said, "We're glad you're here, I'm not trying to stop you from speaking, you can come up and give your name and say ditto and sit down, we know you're here, we see you, and we're happy that you're here and you care." So, I'm not trying to silence anyone, I would like everyone to speak. You've got three minutes, and at the end, we're going to set a little timer and we'll ask the next person to come up. So whether you're speaking for it or against it, it's going to be the same timing. So, after that, I will open the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak. Just state your name and your address for us, if you would.
My name is Samuel Plicker, I live at 255 Sam Jenkins Road, Gray, Tennessee. I'm here as a Gray resident. In the past, this commission, not anybody here, has been antagonistic to the members in the population of Gray. I've been told by the commissioners in the past that we don't matter because we are not voting members to vote for you. Y'all have been antagonistic to us Gray individuals. I implore you, none of you here were, and part of that, but implore you, listen to the citizens of Gray. Y'all are developing out where we live, and you're making our lives miserable. Traffic is becoming a major concern. Suncrest Drive is becoming more and more dangerous every day. You have more developments on Suncrest Drive, you have over 100 homes, I'm sorry, over 100 apartments going in right before this Keebler annexation. We don't have the ability to handle the traffic of what's going in. How in the world are we going to handle the traffic? It's not that we don't want development of Gray, that's not what we're asking. We're asking that we do it in an intelligible way, that we make it safe. We're not safe at the intersection of Sam Jenkins Road and Suncrest. We are not safe at the intersection of the opioid clinic. We are not safe as the trucks go in and out where they're putting in the new apartment buildings. Y'all can continue to put more and more developments where we live without putting infrastructure and safety. Right now, as it stands on Sam Jenkins Road, the exit to that is where people park for the bus lane for Ridgeview Elementary. There're going to be people there and buses there, yet you're putting an intersection there. It just highlights how much this Johnson City doesn't understand the ins and outs of Gray. Please listen to us, in the past, you haven't. We just want to, all of us here, want you to actually listen to us, pay attention to us. We are not asking not to develop, we are asking you to develop wisely and safely in the way that Gray has been developed in the past. Not this high-density stuff that maximizes profits, but in a way that makes this a community, makes it livable, and a wonderful, a wonderful place to, to live and be a society. That's what we want. Please listen to my fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lee Hunt, 367 Walker's Bend Road in Gray, right behind Ridgeview Elementary. I can answer a few of the questions that were brought up, like the red. Already, the water in our area, the pressure and volume has dropped very much, even in the last week. So what we already have, even without new construction, is not adequate for what we have there right now. To kind of build on what he said for the traffic, I would love to invite you all to come out to that area during school hours, especially when schools are being, Daniel Boone High School and Ridgeview, when they are being, in the morning and in the afternoon when they're being let out. Traffic is terrible, you will sit on Sam Jenkins trying to make a left onto Suncrest for sometimes 10, 15 minutes at a time. The, you asked a question about lot size and diversity. If you've ever seen a Dr. Horton area, there's not much diversity, there's pretty much cookie-cutter homes. We've been in several when we were looking, and they're all very much the same, look exactly the same. They squeeze as much house as they can on the smallest lot possible because they're trying to maximize profits, which means there's going to be just that many more people. As far as the police presence, I think it said 2.45, was that correct? You know, already, you can go up and down that road and there's just, you never see police, there's already people, they pass on the middle lane, they fly 70, 80 mile an hour already up that road. 2.47 would not be enough for what we have currently, let alone bringing in this, this new area. If you're talking about just the townhomes, which I think is the, the first ordinance, like the gentleman said before, there's already some going in, there's already been issues with traffic on, what's it called, I can't think, Suncrest already. One minute, 24 seconds. Trying to get everything, you know, at once. But I, I do love what you guys are doing, and I love that we're expanding. I would like to see it, I, I almost liked what she said earlier, that if it was county, it would be larger lots, like a half acre lot, which is kind of what you have already in the area, and areas where people can walk and kind of enjoy the area. You've got Walker's Bend directly, and the other thing, that's right up against a school already, and you have to bus then students where they can throw a rock and hit a school, now you're going to be busing them 30 minutes away, where students are going to spend a very long time on a bus ride. They'll probably be spending an hour to hour and a half, I was in education for a long time, hour, hour and a half on a bus every day just to get to and from school from that far away. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
My name's Eric Barnes, I live at 374 Delmar Salts Road in Gray. Thank you for the opportunity to share concerns on behalf of my family and many neighbors about the proposed development. My comments certainly do not represent all, but do represent the concerns of many I've spoken with. First, I want to say thank you to the city staff, the zoning board, the developer, and Representative Hicks and others who have worked over several months to add some green space and work on lot size. That seems to make the proposed development at least a bit less impactful to our community. However, it's not possible to overemphasize how this large development and others you have recently approved will change our community. I hope that you understand and respect where we come from on that matter. I have two items that I want to address, and respectfully ask that you consider before taking your vote on annexation tonight. That's road safety and community park access. The amount of traffic currently on the nearly two-mile section of Suncrest Drive from Exit 13 to the Hands-on Museum is beyond the design of that road, that's been brought up already. The daily traffic count, according to TDOT, on Suncrest Drive is 14,350 cars. That is very close to the Boones Creek Road going south at 14,800 cars. They already have traffic signals on that road, and of course, there's other development plan and upgrades planned there. Our, our road is a two-lane road. You've got, you've got a lane in the middle, but you can't use it. You can't legally or safely pass a car. And when you have a slower vehicle, folks get impatient, and they, they pass in that illegal lane. It happens every day, multiple times a day. That runs the risk of serious head-on collisions. Traffic signals are needed now. At most hours of the day, it is very, very risky to try and make a left-hand turn at Shadden Gray Station and Suncrest. It's a dangerous intersection now. There're just not, there's just not a brake in the traffic, and when, when you come to it, you have to guess what the person across from you is going to do. People do, you do hand signals, that's, that's not, that's not the kind of signals we need. There've been a lot of, lots of accidents there. My wife, my father, my aunt, my uncle, my daughter, my grandson, they have to navigate that intersection every day, and that worries me greatly. There, there's many other that I care about that have to do the same. Adding 500 more residents right in this area is going to make a bad situation even worse. The intersection of Sam Jenkins Road and Suncrest at the museum is a major headache for some of these folks that have to come out there. Most any time, traffic's backed up, it's been mentioned here, there's just no brake for folks to make a left-hand turn, and it's especially bad when school is letting in and out. For the past year, we, we've heard about studies, references of the state doing something. We don't need studies, we need action. We know the developer is offering money, $50,000, it's been reported, for each of these two locations for traffic signals. Before approving this major development, I ask that you take action tonight to make public priority of safety, public safety a priority, and commit that the additional funding will be in your 2023, 2024 budget for these two traffic signals. My other...
I'm sorry, your time's up, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. Thank you. We figured somebody might say what he was going to say here at the end, so.
We live around Sandy, so. I'm Jeff Stork, I live 1257 Gray Station Road, and I know a couple of you, I just retired from the police department here after 30-plus years of service, and I'm going to talk a little bit about traffic, but there's already lots needed, and two of them are in the city, one of them is currently in the county. The other would be Roscoe Fitz, right as you get off the interstate. TDOT designed that, that intersection, when they redid the interchange for a red light, there's just not one there. So, that's what, all of those, all of those major intersections need red lights. You, you know, you just annexed and are putting in 105 new apartments right before you get to Shadden Road. I don't know how they're going to get out of their apartment complex, they're definitely not going to do it safely. So, that's what I'm talking about, and speed. Speed on Suncrest, I've been out there, and I've issued plenty of speeding citations, people I've worked with have been out there. You can pull the numbers, they're, it's 60, 70 miles an hour, not 45 or 40 like it's supposed to be. So, you know, I understand, you know, I know, I know why the police department's not out there more right now, it's just, it's not able to do it, there's too much call volume in the city to be in Gray. We always got out there when we could and took care of what we can, you know, we could at that time. And that's not counting, you know, you don't go out there and sit and count the people that are going 10 miles an hour over, you start at 15 or 20 because you'd say busy enough doing that. So, the other thing that Mr. Barnes is going to talk about is the green space in this development. He's willing to do some green space, a walking trail, but I understand, he's going to ask that the city maintain that after this development is done, and we, all the people of Gray, would appreciate that. We, you know, that's park space that we could all use, I know there's parking spaces for us to come up, use the walking trails, and that's something that Gray does not have, and, you know, we, the citizens of Gray, would appreciate it if you would go ahead and, you know, agree to maintain that. Okay, and that's all I have.
Congratulations.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, too.
Danny Sales, I live on Delmar Salts Road, my wife and I have property that joined the Keebler property on two sides. Mayor Fowler, members of the commission? Well, it has taken us quite a while to get to this point tonight. Seven months publicly and with a lot of work behind the scenes, and progress has been made. Lot averaging to let developments have a better look and better utilize the natural landscape, and some progress on an open space rule, which still needs a good deal of work to provide outside activity for residents, and most important to me, to protect important and special natural resources like water, plants, and animals. I appreciate the city staff and the Planning Commission agreeing to improve these items and to accept our input into those decisions. I appreciate this developer in working with us as well, but also seeking out our neighbors to address their concerns and explain their intentions. Additionally, I appreciate the improvements proposed in the plan for public access to trails and activity fields, and encourage the city to actively work with Landstar to have those mutual benefits fully developed. From day one, traffic concerns have been the primary issue for us on this and other developments in the Gray community. Out of respect and in an honorable fashion, we discussed and provided this commission and others a simple and reasonable request to work with the Gray residents to do two things. One, help get Suncrest Drive and appropriate parts of Highway 75 on the state priority list for upgrade. And two, utilize a dollar commitment from the development to place traffic signals at Sam Jenkins Road and at the crossroad of Shadden Road and Old Gray Station Road. Not a pie-in-the-sky request, but simply to support and cooperate with us in seeking ways to improve the safety for our residents. Then on Tuesday evening, we got a jolt from a letter asking for funding that looked to preempt this meeting tonight and support improvements on Boones Creek Road. Even with the curious timing, City Manager Ball correctly says the news report was a result of a corridor, corridor study initiated a couple of years ago. I'm aware of the study and hope long-range planning continues in the city and the county. However, things can change over time, and I certainly hope the ship that is Johnson City is not too antiquated or so bloated that it cannot pivot to turn toward new and more pressing needs. That is what has happened in Gray during this time, and it began well before the beginning of those studies. No offense to our neighbors in Boones Creek, we know them and count them as our friends, many are relatives, and that road certainly will need improvements. However, I will note the TDOT's current traffic numbers on Boones Creek Road toward Jonesboro and Suncrest Drive toward Daniel Boone are basically the same. However, that number is over a five-mile road to Jonesboro compared to the same number on less than a two-mile road in Gray. Suncrest Drive serves one of the two county high schools and Ridgeview Elementary, and a lot of this traffic going to Gray Elementary as well. Together, a lot of children. Additionally, in Gray, in the Gray area, there are more than 1,000 housing units already built, under construction, or planned that will impact the Dale Ford Interchange. I do believe that after a short time, Gray residents will let this curiosity slide and remain focused on our major concern. Many of us are long-time, longtime residents, and some are new residents who have become our friends. We hope the new city residents coming will also be an important part of Gray and know that many will also become our friends. Together, we remain focused on the safety concerns we have and sincerely want to have the city and county join with us in working to meet this community's needs. Folks need to get to work, children need to get to school, but the most important, each of us wants to return to our home and family at the end of that day. I look forward to the comments of others here and discussion by this commission tonight, and not to forget, we are looking forward to your commitment to work with us on the two items we have requested. I'll close by just saying, I sort of assumed that Commissioner Wise mentioned the audit number because he knew, I would say, $58 million you all can afford to put in those red lights.
I wasn't thinking of you, I was thinking of a half a dozen other people like to spend the money we don't have, but go ahead.
Well, I got all excited, but then you burst my bubble.
Sorry. It burst our bubble, too, when we heard it, so sorry about that. I appreciate you, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to your discussion.
My name's John Deacons, I'm at 134 John Deacons Road, Selfridge Burnings. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. It won't take as long as Danny did, it'll take about a minute. I'd just like to say that the meeting at Gray, one of the first things City Manager Ball talked about was transparency and communication with Washington County. Well, to this day, no one has spoken to the Highway Department about this issue on this development. And I would just like to encourage the Public Works Department, which I think Mr. Best did go to the Highway Department to meet Mr. Thompson last week, to work with them on other developments that are coming around. them on other developments that are coming around the county that's going to impact this area. And, uh, but, uh, you know, this is going to add roughly 3,000 to 4,000 trips a day is what it's going to add. At four, what's, 488 units, I believe? So, um, we did a 30-year long-range plan, I think it was 2012 or '13, somewhere in there. And we anticipated the Gray Boons Creek area in 30 years growing by 50%. I think we've already passed that. From, I mean, just from the ridges to Gray, when you count the apartments and all the other developments that are going on, like on Bob Ford Road, uh, in the county. Of course, I'm not in the loop anymore. I retired last June. And, uh, and like Commissioner Wise once says, we don't want to do anything willy-nilly.
I did say that.
We want to do it correct. And, um, you know, Anthony Todd does a fine job. Uh, I can't say anything about development because we build houses also, we do some development also. But the one thing I want to encourage the city is to work with the county and to make this the safest corridor we, we can. Because you've got Daniel Boone and TPI, they, they let out at the same time. The other day, they were backed up from 26 all the way down past Builders First Source going to Gray. That's how far the traffic was backed up. And then you've got people from TPI trying to get out to make a left turn. And, you know, people would used to call me and say, this road's dangerous. And I say, the road's not dangerous, the people driving it make it dangerous. But when people have to sit and wait and get impatient, that's what causes the problem. The, did I take three minutes already?
Does everybody remember him saying he was only going to need one minute? Does everybody remember that?
In the study we did on the Gray Station, I'll just take one more second, please. The highest accident incident rate on Bobby Hicks Road was the intersection of Grace Station Road and State Route 75. Over 60 accidents in three years. And the next one was the Gray Station and Boons Creek Road, 40-some in three years. And the county's three-laning their par from McGarry Queen down past Grace Station Road in the process. So, I would encourage the city to do the same on the Gray Station pass pass. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Barack Saltzman, 2125 Lyons Ben Road in Knoxville, Tennessee. I'm also the city manager for D.R. Horton, uh, running both the Knoxville and Northeast Tennessee markets for the company. Uh, D.R. Horton is the largest home builder in the country. Uh, we are proud to have closed our millionth home, uh, since we started up 45 years ago after, out of the back of D.R., a Donnie Ray Horton's truck, uh, in Arlington, Texas, uh, that 45 years ago. Uh, that million homes is about 1% of the U.S. population that lives in a home built by D.R. Horton. We are very proud of what we do, and we're also very proud to be a very decentralized company with a lot of local operators that focus on the day-to-day operations here in Northeast Tennessee and Knoxville. So, myself and our management team, which I'll introduce real quick. We've got Zach Barnett, who is a Gray native, went to Daniel Boone High School, ETSU, actually formerly worked with, uh, the city. Uh, we have Adam Hilton, who has been in the area for, uh, over 40 years, um, went to, um, David Crockett High School. Uh, we have Elizabeth Rowe, who, um, is also a Johnson City native, uh, got, uh, ETS grad, ETSU graduate, and also worked for the city in Kingsport. Lauren Poe, who is also, um, an ETSU graduate, Johnson City native. And Kevin Musick, our construction manager, who is a Kingsport native, DB grad, uh, and has been with D.R. Horton for about eight years now. Those folks and myself make about 95% of the decisions that happen in this market, and we care deeply about what happens in this market. We also have about 40, um, local, uh, team members who work here as well, and we are all focused on making sure that the growth that we support here in Northeast Tennessee is part of a sustained ability to, uh, develop and grow over time. We want to be a good partner. We want to make sure we take care of safety concerns as well. That's why we're working with Landstar, uh, our development partner, to help, uh, potentially, uh, bridge the gap with traffic lights as well. We are also, uh, an investor in people. We have a scholarship with TCAT, uh, that we announced about two months ago, uh, to support the Residential Construction Trades Program, uh, to increase, uh, enrollment at both the Kingsport-Sullivan North location and also the new Boons Creek location coming up. We're also working with Northeast State and Virginia Highlands, uh, to create more workforce development programs as well in the residential trades. We work with, uh, nonprofits, including Appalachian Service Projects, that we, uh, just actually announced, uh, earlier this week, that we are sponsoring TCAT, uh, at the Race to Build with Appalachian Service Projects to donate a home to a veteran in Johnson City who has zero financial means to be able to purchase their own home. And we're very excited to be a part of that this year and look forward to doing that in the future as well. We also work with, uh, opioid recovery nonprofits, like 180 in Kingsport, and also economic development partners like Sync Space. We are grateful for the opportunity to be a part of an upward cycle of prosperity in Northeast Tennessee, and we look forward to the potential ability to invest $100 million in the city of Johnson City with this annexation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Doug Khan, 1081 Peaceful Drive, uh, Jonesboro, right, uh, off of Douglas Chapel. And just wanted to let you know, we moved here about a year ago, September, fell in love with the Gray area, and we were running away from a D.R. Horton, um, community in Florida. Um, I'm concerned about the lot sizes and what I heard earlier today about the water pressures. Um, they are a production builder, you know, we did have issues with the speed at which they went up as well as the water pressure. Uh, we were unable to water our yard, uh, in the summertime because we just didn't have the water pressure. So, I just wanted to put those facts forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's just part of the construction going fast. A lot of people had some roofing issues and leaks and things like that.
Good evening. Tim Hicks, 194 Ripple Falls, Gray. I feel like this project has came a long way since the last time I was here, and that's good. I feel like people has worked together. I feel like, uh, you know, the developer has went over and beyond, I believe, trying to work with folks that's especially close to the area. You know, we, he worked on lot sizes to where, uh, most of these houses will be around 20 to 30 foot apart. That's, was one of the main concerns, I think, that people had is where they just weren't bunched in on top of each other. It's going to be similar to a project that's out on the lake, which, which is a, uh, you know, a, a good-looking project, and I, I mean, I just feel like that, that what, you know, he's offering here is, uh, is good, and you can tell, you know, by the, by the citizens, that the main concern is traffic. That's going to be the main concern. I will, uh, you know, as a state representative, I can tell you that I will work with everything that I've got for these citizens because these folks, I mean, we got people here that, that is my kinfolk. We got people that knew me when I was a, a little boy. I got my mom here that whooped me when I was a little boy. So, uh, you know, they, they keep me on the straight and narrow. So, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to work extremely hard, hard with T-Dot and, and get all the grants we can get for red lights. I thought, you know, and, and it sounds complicated, but in talking with T-Dot, it's not real complicated. A couple of red lights and some turning lanes will truly, truly, truly make that entire section of road a lot safer, a lot easier to get around. So, it's not like it's a hard fix, okay? For, for now. Uh, we'll get the road on a list to, to, you know, in my time as state representative, I hope to get a lot of roads on the list. That's what I want to work on. I'm on transportation and I work extremely hard at that. So, uh, so I will work hard and work with you all, uh, work with the developer, and, and do what we can to, to, to make Gray a great place. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's been a great place for us, for me to grow up. I cherish the people that's here tonight extremely. I mean, they're, they're great people. That's why I ran for office, is, is I just really, uh, have a love for where I'm from. So, it's, it's extremely important. So, I thank you all for working extremely hard on this project and, and, you know, we'll see what, we'll see what happens. Thanks.
Hey, I had a question for you before you leave. Is it, is there a Bobby Hicks that's related to you also?
Bobby Hicks was my father.
I know that. And that's the road we're talking about, correct? Hopefully, you can help us with that.
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll get, we'll get her done.
My name is James Miller. I live on Buckingham Road, about a mile and a half from this wonderful intersection we're talking about. Uh, I'm certainly not opposed to progress. As a matter of fact, my wife and I had a nice dinner at one of the best barbecue places in the state of Tennessee. We had a big Ridgewood platter today. But you know, when I walked out, I didn't give the bill to somebody else, I paid for it, okay? So, my concern is, who's going to pay for all of this infrastructure that needs to be put in? Well, my understanding is that, uh, our property taxes are going to be raised. Well, I own three properties in Gray. I paying that taxes now. If you raise my taxes 25%, okay? I will be paying for it. Not the developer, not Horton. Now, if Horton, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe if they build, build, uh, build a house in Knoxville or Nashville or Memphis, they pay an environmental impact fee, which helps cover that infrastructure cost, okay? Instead of leaving it on the poor taxpayers to pay. All of these citizens of Gray, we're the taxpayers, okay? We're going to pick up that, uh, fee, okay? We're going, if you increase our taxes, we're going to be paying for it. Well, don't leave the bill for us to pay. Let the ones who profit from it pay it, okay? So, I'm just asking you to consider, implement a, uh, environmental impact fee and let the developers pay, help, help out, okay? Don't put the burden on the, uh, taxpayers back. Thank you.
Ms. Ball, I have inquired about an impact fee before, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's not allowable under Tennessee law, according to interpretations we've received?
We, we will follow up on that, but that is our understanding at this point, that we're not allowed to do that. That what the, the developer pays has to be, um, the requirement has to mitigate the impact, the actual traffic impact. So, that's the reason we're recommending a traffic study that demonstrates what that impact is.
My name is Tim White. I live at 138 Hicks Acres Drive, and this is my son Caleb. We've lived in the Gray area for about three years. We love the area, and like some of the other people has talked before, the traffic is very bad. Going to school, waiting for Ridgeview traffic line, the bus line, the Shadden Road, the Sam Jenkins Road, it's extremely dangerous. Uh, love the idea of having growth, but one thing that's great about Gray, I'm 15 minutes from the city. I've come to Johnson City, I'm 15 minutes from Kingsport, so, uh, really nice place and like the small community area. Uh, of course, growth happens, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, Johnson City for, uh, their, uh, commitment to the Gray area and wanting to grow the area. But, uh, like the other people have said, my concerns is for the traffic, for the schools, uh, and hopefully, uh, that'll be something that, uh, will be addressed either from the county or the city. So, appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I will close the public. Oh, go ahead.
I live at 236 Sam Jenkins Road. I live between the sign that says 15-minute speed limit, that's on the edge of our property, and the school's on our right, okay? I look out my kitchen window at 75. It's nothing but traffic flying. It's just always flying. My husband leaves, goes somewhere, I watch out the window for him across there. Takes him a long time to get off the road to get up there. There's been so many, in 96, my daughter was in a bad accident there at the end of Sam Jenkins. And then in 99, my daughter left and she missed the turn, they missed the turnoff, come back, and there was a, a wreck there that killed my capener. That's when they worked on the road, which was supposed to improve, improve the road greatly. But now, there's so much traffic coming, going to, back and forth from Sam Jenk, uh, to Sulfur Springs and back. It's ridiculous. And then I look out my front, and it's Grand Central Station out there all the time, the traffic's just all the time. And I hate going out when there's traffic out there, and I don't like my granddaughter playing out there. But I've been watching, and, uh, well, they used to line all the way up for the school when they let out, all the way close to, uh, where the hill is. There's a hill there that you go over that's a blind spot, it's very dangerous. And, uh, so, then they put a two-lane in front of the school. I guess you all know that. And, uh, but they're still, if you go out there and watch, they're still lined up, but then it becomes a single line, and they're still coming past where the development is, where you want the buildings to be. They're still doing that, and so, well, I guess it was this past week, I think they were going to survey and the car caught on fire, the vehicle caught on fire, it took a long time for them to clean it up. I didn't know what was going on, I thought it was a bad wreck, all kinds of sirens and stuff. And so, uh, it slowed down the traffic again. And so, then, um, then they were, they were cutting trees this week, it stops the traffic. And I keep wondering, why are people slowing down in front of my house, you know? It's just such a narrow road. There's no room. There's no room for what you're planning to do. You're going to put an outlet there between where I live and the school, or the house beside us is Phillips', you going to put an outlet there? How are people going to get through there like that with, what is it, 300 to 400 houses? I don't see how you want to do that. And then I watch out, a lot of times, we have a lot of emergency vehicles coming by, and they have to slow down for that school traffic, and sometimes they're just, somebody could die for the time they get out there. If you had, at all those other houses, it's going to make it a whole lot worse, a whole lot worse. So, I'm, I'm against this, and I hope and pray, I pray to God that you all vote against this. Thank you.
My name is Pam Pluker. I live at 255 Sam Jenkins. We live exactly right across the street from Ridgeview, and I've been walking with my kids to school ever since my oldest started. He's at Boone now. So, we've been doing this for a long time. The roads have been increasingly full of traffic, and we have policemen that have stayed on our property and run radar, and, um, they'll slow down when they see the cops, but they don't slow down all the time. My oldest is starting to drive, and getting out on the traffic in Suncrest, uh, has just been kind of crazy. Not quite as crazy as a parking lot at Daniel Boone, but it's, uh, it's getting there. But I also said, I, I echo the comments that have been made, um, about the traffic concerns that others have made, and I also just want to add to that, too, if you do traffic studies, these people are going to be going up and down the interstates as well because they're going to be working in Kingsport and Johnson City, and, you know, so they're going to be everywhere. You're not just contributing to traffic in Sun, on Suncrest Drive, you're going to be contributing to traffic on 26. And how many times a week is that avenue blocked from accidents now, just because of the increase that we've already had? We've got all these houses going in on the other end of Sam Jenkins, there's Buckingham Development that's putting in, I think, 200 homes down there. Um, and all the apartments that are going in on the other side of Gray, plus the ones that are being built across from the gift box. So, we just have a huge impact of automobile traffic that's causing problems, not just in Gray, but that's actually overflowing into the whole area and causing problems for a lot of commuters, people who've been there for years, people who have been here for six months. So, I just, it's not just the, uh, the immediate Gray area that's my concern, it's also the interstate as well because the alternate routes around are also getting blocked. So, it's just making traffic and, and getting to anywhere you need to be a very big problem. So, thank you.
Can you state your last name again?
Pluker.
Can you spell that for me?
P-L-U-C-K-E-R.
Thank you. Thank you.
We tried to go somewhere there today, tried to go out of our driveway, and we couldn't get out. I said, "Let's just wait, we're not hurt." It took us about 30 minutes, they just got funky, and we got out of our driveway, looked
I'm Evan Barnes, and I have property on Suncrest Drive that is in the city. I didn't fight the city when they annexed it. I have about five business properties there, five or six, and I moved from there, but I live up in Kealan Heights now. But I come down Shaddon Road to get on Suncrest Drive, and if I'm trying to make a left turn early in the morning, you can't do it. There's no way, if you're going left toward Daniel Boone School or some reason, going that way. But if you're turning right, you might sit there a while, but there'll be, coming down the road there, there'll be five or six people lined up waiting to get on Suncrest Drive, which is a state highway, 75. And I just think a red light there is definitely needed in this one area, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just a fast question. I know it was said earlier that--
Name an address, please.
I'm sorry?
Name an address, please, for the record.
Lee Hunt, 367 Walker's Ben Road.
Yeah, forgot you're up here.
Yeah, that's fine. I knew him, so I knew.
Sorry about that.
Someone had said earlier that when the interchange was fixed, there was supposed to be a light installed directly around. That's been over seven years. So, if a light that's already been ready to be installed, it's taken more than seven years, what, you know, I heard Representative Hicks say he'll see to it. Is that going to be seven years, 14 years to get the, you know, well, basically, this is compounding problems that already exist. What's the hurry? It seems like the problems that we currently have would need to be fixed before this should actually even be considered. Seems like it would be, need to be maybe tabled year to five. Thank you.
Anyone else? I don't want to cut anybody off, so, all right, I'm going to close the public hearing. So, comments, motions? Well, I will start out. Someone, I can't remember who it was, that was talking about not listening in the past or what they did here from the city commission was not great stuff. So, I can tell you, the five people up here care. I'm a physician, I take care of a lot of people who live in Gray. I've been doing it for 30 years. I have five kids. I don't like anything to do with not having a safe road. So, number one on my list will be making sure that if this development goes in, that we, I'll work with, I'll go to Nashville with Representative Hicks myself and make sure that this gets on the list at TDOT. We've done it before, and we'll go march our way down there. I don't like that drive either, but I will drive back and forth to Nashville to do things. So, it's not that we're not listening. I wrote down, I know everything that y'all talked about, traffic from everybody that doesn't like that, the speed on that road, the turn lanes that are suicide lanes, that my kids like to call them, that they get in sometimes when they're trying to turn, water pressure in there, the road safety, just the roads themselves. So, we're listening, we're not, we invited you here to a public hearing so we could hear you and not just do this. It's not just a formality for me. So, just letting you know, I heard everybody that spoke, and I care, so.
And if I, can I add to that? I think there's been a time or two, people have said, "You all are wanting to," or "you all are planning to." And let me be abundantly clear, the city is not doing anything here except considering a property owner's annexation request. We're not proposing to build anything. We're being asked to annex property into the city so that a private developer can build housing. And Mr. Hunt asked the question, "What's the hurry?" If you're trying to buy a house in East Tennessee right now, that's the hurry, okay, is the good luck. And so, there is a tension here with respect to meeting the needs of folks for housing, and there's also a public safety concern, and we certainly hear that. Now, what I would say to you is, most of the development that has occurred in Gray over the last 15 or 20 years that has contributed to some of the traffic you're talking about is not inside the city limits. Those are developments in Sulphur Springs and out and about, and we've seen what the consequences of that can be. And so, I would say to you, if I were a property owner, I would much rather see this developed inside the city limits, because things like traffic studies and some of those regulations are going to become a part of the conversation in a way they would not in an unincorporated area. And so, I've served on this board now long enough to have been asked to make rezoning decisions in parts of the city. And so, the comment, you know, "We don't care because you don't vote," well, that's simply not true. And so, what I would say is, the way this pattern plays out, we'll get asked to rezone a piece of property on Greenwood Drive, or a piece of property on West Walnut Street, or something clearly inside the city limits, and it's going to have traffic implications. The issue is, you've got to have the need created by the project, and I think part of what's happening in Gray is, there's a little bit of a no-man's land occurring there. You're in the city, but you're not entirely in the city. Some of it's county roads, some of it's city roads, some of it's a state route, some of it's the interstate. And so, we see all that, but we can't even really begin to have the conversation about what the traffic plan needs to be until we have a plan that you can begin to make some hard projections about. What I hope, you know, what we're talking about is not 0 to 500. What we're talking about is 270 to 500. I mean, they could by right be developing 270 houses out there tomorrow, and you know what they need to ask you for? Not a darn thing. They don't have to get a D cell lane, they don't have to, they don't have to do anything. They just start building, okay? And so, it's important to evaluate that what we're measuring is not all or nothing, it's something on a spectrum. And so, clearly, the public safety piece is a part of it, but we can't even begin, people, I think, very often think the traffic light is going to solve all problems. Sometimes a traffic light's the worst possible thing you can do if you're trying to do something with traffic. You know, there may, there are other tools that can be used to slow traffic, to move traffic, D cell lanes, et cetera, and until you know what you're building, where you're building it, where people are going to get into the neighborhood, where people are going to get out of the neighborhood, you really, you can't, you can't begin to make hard, fast plans until you know what that is. And so, I just, regardless of what the eventual decisions are, I want you to know that from the rezoning standpoint, and we do this when it's citizens who vote in city elections, too, sometimes we've got to vote on the rezoning before we have an opportunity to talk about the traffic management and planning, because you have to have the issue to begin planning around before you can have the planning around it. So, a lot of the development that's already happened out there is obviously contributing to this. I hope that this development begins to contribute to the solution, not just for its impact, but for the impact of all these other developments that haven't done anything to help your situation. And to the gentleman, and I believe it was Mr. Barnes, no, I'm sorry, maybe it was Mr. Miller, yeah, Mr. Miller, you know, as far as paying property tax, remember, in Gray, unless you're inside the city limits, this body couldn't tax you if we wanted to. So, you're off the hook. You don't have to worry about us taxing you if your property is outside the city limits. But, you know, I think, in the end, we want to create a community where your children can afford to buy a home, and that's the pressure point we're on. We can create something so onerous regulatorily that it'd look like San Francisco, nobody could afford to live there. That's how you get there. You make it so hard to build that a house that should be 300,000 is a million, and I think that's the balancing act we're all trying to strike.
If I may comment on this matter, I want to mention that this has been a very challenging process for us all. Seven months, many commission meetings, committee meetings, workshops. We've come in in the evening. I've missed soccer games, practices, helping my son with homework, to put a lot of time and effort into paying, and paying attention and giving my time, or our time, towards making decisions that are aligned with smart growth and responsible development. We hear your concerns of traffic, and we're still working hard to come up with solutions to address those concerns. I heard someone say, you want, I heard someone say about you mattering. You do matter. Everyone in this room here matters, regardless if you voted for us or not. You matter because you are a person. And from my standpoint, I don't listen to respond, I listen to learn, and I listen to understand, and I believe my colleagues here, we're committed to the same thing. This is 495 units. There are many people out here to, to Commissioner Wise's point, can't afford a home, and that's a major concern. We want to work hard to come up with solutions to provide affordable housing, workforce housing, that is, but affordable housing at large. But again, this is a challenging process for all of us. It's been a lot of time and effort into making sure that we're making the right decisions. So, I appreciate all the hard work from our staff. I appreciate all the hard work from this commission. I appreciate all the comments that you've made throughout time, but we have to continue to work to come up with the best solution for our community at large.
First of all, thank everyone for being here tonight and sharing, and for those who made calls and emails that we've been getting over time. For those of you who live in the city of Johnson City already, in the Gray area, you are our constituents, and we're talking about an issue that exists today. That's one of, that's one of the topics we've been addressing tonight. I've been noticing our city manager taking copious notes over here. So, when you talk about water pressure issue and you're in the city, I see Mr. Witherspoon back here, and we need to figure out what that's all about, and these units have not even started, and they won't start for quite a while, for sure. But we have, we have traffic issues out there right now. I was out, not a few weeks ago, at a business, and it took me 10 minutes sitting there trying to get out on Suncrest Drive. So, I don't think anyone is denying the fact of everything you're saying is absolutely true. Now, who are those drivers who are speeding? Who are those drivers who are passing in the turning lane? Who are those drivers who are going around the outsides and trying to pass, you know, on the right and on the left, which is not an area to do? It's your neighbors. It's the people who live there. I don't think we have a whole lot of cut-through traffic, maybe a little bit, they're going to Jonesboro down that way. And so, for right now, we need, we need to raise the visibility to everybody out there about the dangers on Suncrest and try to get some responsibility of people using that road. Now, I know that's not an answer, but it's getting the community involved in a first-step solution to step up our enforcement to where we can and start issuing tickets and citations for people who are speeding. Now, one of the nice things I heard tonight was from Representative Hicks and from Johnny Deakins, and then from the city. We have three groups who can, with you, I mean, I think if we can all get our heads together, there isn't anything that we can't solve, and we have to all have that commitment to make that happen. But as has been stated up here, we've got Apache City, then we've got county, we've got city, we've got county, and so, we just have to get our heads together and see what we can do. I would also call on the administrators of the school systems out there for Daniel Boone. I've heard all sorts of concerns about when school is out, the students who drive are driving like race car drivers out there, and then they turn on the side roads, and it becomes quite dangerous. And so, another thing would be that we really approach Dr. Boyd out in Washington County School System, and they, as a school, really start talking to their young drivers about, you know, their responsibility in that particular area. I think, you know, the sooner we can get this traffic study done, and then there may be some very common sense things that we could do early on that we know are going to fit into some kind of plan. And when we've got the folks who are working together, particularly with Representative Hicks, they can find us some money, and I see him sitting over there, I wanted to get him to sign that piece of paper as he was talking about it. But we just, we need to advance what we can do out there right now to address the issues that we have. There are a number of projects that several of you mentioned, I don't even know if they're in the city or, but there's just a lot of building out there, whether it's city or county. And so, you know, understanding the totality of that and the impact, someone talked about the interstate. Everybody knows that. You're getting calls, there's a wreck on the interstate, I'll be there, and, you know, I don't know how long I'm going to be delayed. So, we have congestion issues, but we have driver issues, too, and we have people who their temperament and their patience is like this big, you know? So, we see a lot of things that present us with, you know, challenges that perhaps we haven't had in the past. So, I'm certainly one to see how we can expedite anything we can do to help resolve the problems. If you'll work with us, and we need to have some neighborhood meetings out there, because that's who's driving on the roads, for sure, so.
Well, and if I could interrupt on that point, I guess, I think really, the stakeholders that need to get in the room are our traffic engineer and public works, and the highway superintendent, perhaps the county mayor, the city manager, Representative Hicks, because they're clearly, there is no one entity that's going to fix all this. There are several different entities that bring different resources, and this one development, this annexation request, even this and the couple of others are not what is driving the problem. I mean, because they don't have any people in them yet. You're describing a problem, there aren't even people living in the stuff that we're talking about. And so, I think we all agree, if it's like this, and then you add something to it, you're going to compound the issue. Let's get all those people in a room, you know, there was a reference to Boones Creek. Part of what was happening in the Boones Creek project announcement and some of that is that there was a group driving a study and driving a conversation about solving the problems before the problems magnified. And so, as we look at this, as we look at Gray, let's not kind of sit back with a wait and see, let's recognize it's, we're going to grow. You know, nobody here is actively like, "Let's try to grow this place. Washington County's too small, we need us some more people here." No, I don't think anybody, but I think the word is out, right? I mean, you know, all the things that make it a place we want to live, make it a place other people want to live. And so, to the degree we can, we need to take a lesson from Boones Creek, which is advocate for a plan and work that plan as a part of the solution. This is just, this is just a sideshow to the bigger, the bigger concern, I think, and we need to be investing our time in that effort proactively. And I think you have in Representative Hicks, a very effective ally in Nashville, particularly with the transportation issues. And so, I think we have a unique opportunity here. We just have to get everybody singing from the same sheet of music.
Might add, that Boones Creek corridor study, that was probably six or eight years ago.
Yeah, it was when I was on the county commission.
It was a long time ago, and when I saw it, too, I was really surprised. I'd forgotten all about even that taking place, so, it caught us all off guard, Mr. Sales.
We've been talking traffic in Gray for over 10 years, in this room.
Well, but I think you need somebody to own driving that conversation, and I think there's no one stakeholder that is fully incentivized to own it. There are a bunch of stakeholders that need to own it together, and I think that's the point I'm trying to make. The solution is going to involve the county and the city. The solution is going to involve the county, and the city, and the neighbors, and so forth. I think we're saying the same thing.
John? Everybody else?
Guess I'll back clean up. Just as clarification, Ms. Ball, so state route, so state's responsible for it, but we're contracted to maintain it, snowplow, potholes, that kind of stuff, right?
We, and I would have to ask Anthony, I think we do it on most roads that are in the city, not all.
So any of the state routes, we are contracted to maintain those, whether they be plowed or maintain the signs, or the state takes care of the markings, but most of the things we're responsible for.
And so just for clarification, we're contracted to do certain things, but we're not allowed to put other devices and whatnot without the state's permission?
Correct. So if we were to put in a traffic signal, we have to go through the state and through their processes. So they have to see the numbers before they will allow us to do anything like that. And I apologize for my voice, it's, it's awful.
We understand.
So I apologize.
He's got laryngitis, if you can't hear him back there, so it's not, it's not his fault.
So translating for the hearing impaired, what he just said was, the state has to agree to put a signal on the state route. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to pay for the state, the signal. And just for your benefit, I heard the number $50,000 tossed around for a signal. How much traffic signal will $50,000 buy, Anthony?
Not much.
About one-tenth of a traffic signal?
It costs about 500, 600,000 dollars.
So they're about a half a million dollars every time you come to a traffic signal, which is crazy. I understand. We, we think it is too, so.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Well, and to what others have mentioned, I think, you know, one of the, the best resources and assets we have in respect to this and other parts of, of the district is, is Representative Hicks. I talk to him regularly, then out there, obviously, I've been to Gray. I've got friends, coworkers, personal business that I have to deal with, and it's, the descriptions of the 15-minute wait is not an exaggeration. I've experienced it myself, I think we all have. And we do care. And I think, you know, I've heard Representative Hicks speak very passionately. I mean, this is a, a big focus of his, and we're blessed to have him on, on the Transportation Committee. And I think that'll be a, a good resource for us with this endeavor. And, and not to belabor or repeat what anybody else has said, but we do care. I've, I've been on the Planning Commission, this is my second term on the City Commission. I've never seen a project go through as much of a wringer as this one has that I can recall. You know, eight-plus months, and I think there's another six months to go, based on the timeline that was showed to us earlier. And a lot of that has to do with caring and listening to the community. We had a neighborhood meeting that we were all at, and I think there were several others. There's, there's been a lot of input, a lot of care, a lot of listening, which resulted in a reduction of units and a lot of other different changes based on community, community asks. So we do care, and, and we work with people from Gray and, and other places, and so we take care of the people that, that we live with, regardless of arbitrary boundaries that say that we live in a city versus a county versus a town.
One other thing is, I know, I'm sure I'm going to get hands in just a minute, but I have met with the developers individually, with them, talking about the project. I've met with D.R. Horton, with Mr. Salzman. I have spent a lot of time outside of my normal meetings, going and finding out. I drove out Shadden Road and turned left, like you were talking about, and sat there for at least seven minutes, and it wasn't when school was getting in or getting out. And that was just middle of an afternoon. So, you know, we care enough to go and look at things like this and not just rubber stamp anything. So it's, it's a process that we are going through. We are not trying to force anything down somebody's throat. It is, it is not a vote that we took just, "Yeah, let's sit back here and let's do..." We all care enough. How many met outside of a regular meeting with the developer or with them, kind of stuff? So all of us have been following up because we care enough that we want it to, to be what we need and what is not going to hurt the people of Gray, so.
I think, and again, let's, let's remember, we have two questions in front of us. The first question is about what sort of land use zoning should be applied to this parcel? And the second question is, should it be annexed? But that's what we're being asked. All of these other questions are relevant to those two questions, but the two questions are zoning application and, and the annexation into the city limits. And none of that is a, do they build it or not? It's, it's a matter of what do they build, how many do they build, to what standards do they build, et cetera. And so I, I sincerely believe there is a greater likelihood that the development proposed in this scenario can land in a way that is beneficial, that's a net positive to Gray with respect to these traffic and, and safety questions that you've raised, with this zone applied and annexed into the city. That, that's where I'm at. This is not about whether they build it or not. They own this property, okay? So whether they, you know, it's 270 or 490, and, you know, whether they had to do a traffic study or don't have to do a traffic study, that, those are what we're weighing. And so I guess the item right now is the, the first item, the application of the zone. And I would make a motion to approve the R2 low-density zoning application.
Would the RP and?
As captioned, yeah, I would make a motion to approve as captioned.
Commissioner, let's clarify one thing, though, is if, if we did not annex it and we're built in the county, we've been tossing around the number, I think you brought it up, Peyton, that they could build on Septic and 270. But we have regional sewer in the area that they could request to join, which means they could build up to what we're talking about right now with the city annexation. And we have, we have a lot of people on the regional system.
Right, they would have to go to the county commission and get rezoned, so there, there is still a political process.
But they still could build the same project by getting onto the city regional system.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner, your last order of business is item 8.1. This is to consider approval of a final resolution on the proposed voluntary annexation and plan of services of approximately 135 acres along Suncrest Drive, also known as the Keebler Annexation.
And I'm going to, I'm going to keep the public hearing closed just because we opened it last time and closed it, and we've heard, I think, from everybody about that. So do I have any motion?
I would make a motion to approve based on the same rationale I expressed a moment ago.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Louse?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Fowler?
Yes.
Before we move on, can, can we ask of staff or task staff with at least serving as point on facilitating an initial meeting between the county highway superintendent, and maybe some of the neighbors, maybe Mr. Sells can help put some together, but, you know, I mean, clearly, there are multiple stakeholders, and we need to get everybody in the same room to think about, like, what are the collective resources we have amongst these different groups? And then what needs to happen? We have a little bit of time. I mean, as much as they would like to be building in six months, they're going to take a little bit of time. And so we, but we need to start that. We needed to have started that five years ago if we wanted to be tracking with Boones Creek. So I don't know if that's something we ask the interim public works director to take point on, or I'll defer to you.
Yeah, I think we would be happy to play a role of convening folks together, all interested parties. I'm sure that Representative Hicks would be happy to help us with that and understand how we could be more effective in the state in doing that. I think we would work through our MPO, because it's a state road, and so we would task Lynn Berry with kind of leading the charge in terms, much like the Boones Creek.
And an MPO for those who may not know alphabet soup.
Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Thank you.
Along with our planning staff and public work staff to help on that.
Anything else?
That's all I have, sir.
Commissioner Wise? Vice Mayor Murphy? Commissioner Brock?
Nothing today.
I move we adjourn. I move we adjourn.